Welcome, everyone, to the July 28th Work Session on City Hall. So I wanted to start out this evening by talking about just recognizing that I know this whole process with the cost differences and everything has been a very difficult conversation for our council to have and not without controversy in the community. And I also wanted to say that I appreciated the Joint Elective Officials meeting and that I did get from everybody a desire to work with Lane County. The question is over what and how? And so I'm going to start out this evening by asking our city manager to have staff respond to the implications of staying, keeping our city hall on the current proposed site or moving it to the Butterfly Lot, the implications in either direction in terms of finances and time, so that you can have something to deliberate and think about as we move forward.
Mayor, what I'll ask is Mike Pennwell to start us off in that conversation and then, of course, as he's providing information, if you have additional questions, we'll try to be very responsive to those as well.
Mayor, I'm on the call.
All right, great, thank you.
So am I.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. That's a broad question and so I want to acknowledge that, first of all, a broad range of questions and so there's a broad range of options, obviously, and how we proceed through that would largely be up to the council ultimately. So starting with the existing site, moving forward, it depends, obviously, on whether you accept the current guaranteed maximum price that's in front of you of $18.2 million, which have a total project cost of $28 million. If that were accepted, we'd move forward with the supplemental budget and the hearing and that sort of thing. If there was a desire to rebid, then we would discuss whether we would want to rebid as is or take advantage of the timeframe to do a little modest redesign, some value engineering, assuming the latter. There would be some amount of process to that. It's a little difficult to put costs on it, but I would guess somewhere in the range of anywhere from $150,000 to $300,000 to do that process so that we would be prepared to go back out for bids. A more extensive remodel would be more. But in all cases, whatever we put into it in terms of additional work, I would want to do that with the hope that we could get at least $2 of value back out for every dollar we put in. I don't want to do, you know, half a million dollars worth of engineering to save half a million dollars on our bids. There's no point in doing that. And then recognizing that there's risk with any rebid, obviously, the idea is that we want to take advantage of the usual seasonal downturn that happens in the winter and early spring and rebid in that timeframe to get more competitive bids. But obviously, there's a risk because we don't know what that downturn will be and how much and so on. So that's how I would sort of describe the main options on moving forward on the current site, the Butterfly Lot site. That's a little more unknown and I think we would want to do some initial analysis about what would be required. There's the 2.0 floor area ratio issue. There's the issue of a much different site context and would we be talking about a complete redesign from the ground up because it's a completely different site? Obviously, we've learned a lot of things from the current site and current design, but we have a very site-specific design and so it's a different design for a different site if we move to the Butterfly Lot. So I would think we would do some amount of analysis and come back to you in the fall sometime for more direction so that we could give you the particulars of what it would take to move forward with that and then at that time make some decisions about moving forward. And assuming a fair amount of redesign, that might be another, you know, year process in order to get a bid window of a year, year and a half from now. But again, it depends on what the council decides and then whether that would save money or cost more money depends on what we do on the Butterfly Lot site. We wouldn't have a plaza associated with the city hall necessarily in the same way if we're trying to create a quarter block for the farmer's market and a separate site for city hall. It would be a smaller site so we presumably wouldn't have room for a parking lot and that sort of thing. So if we downsize and did less site work, it could cost less. If we need to include things for the farmer's market, some other factors, it could cost more. Obviously, we're losing ground to construction cost inflation with a delay of a year, year and a half if that's what it ends up being. Those are what I see as the sort of the way that we would proceed with the Butterfly Lot versus staying on the existing site.
Now, we're going to sort of open it up for discussion and questions and comments. Council Zelenka?
So what's the last day to accept the current guaranteed maximum price bids?
Prior to your break, so your last meeting is the 27th. Currently, there's a public hearing scheduled on the 25th as a supplemental budget unless you take action not to have that.
As we mentioned in our last meeting, we'd be proceeding with that particular public hearing and so presumably you could take action on the 25th or the 27th.
Or what about maybe, since those have items on them, what about potentially 1st of August, 3rd of August, Monday or Tuesday, Wednesday meeting? Is that still within the timeframe for the kind of a little bit into our break, but if we wanted to do a special meeting?
I would check with Mike. My assumption, if you're plus or minus a week or so, that's probably fine. I don't think the guaranteed maximum price holds once we start moving into September and beyond, for example, and so there is some timing around the need for that to make a decision.
Right. So Mike, thanks for kind of outlining it, but it was not very specific. Try to nail you down a little bit more.
Sure.
So how much would it cost to redo the geotechnical stuff associated with figuring out that site and whether or not it's built, how it's built and of course, a little bit?
We need a survey and a geotechnical report. Those parts are fairly minimal. I mean, each, you know, survey is... Survey would be associated probably with a land use process and so on and so it's fairly expensive in terms of a survey, so maybe $15,000 and a geotechnical report, you know, $40,000 or so for the site. But those aren't the major costs. It's, you know, all the design work that's associated with the new site would be where it begins to add up.
Right. So taking an existing building, which is on like three quarters of a half a block and scrunching it into a half of a, or a quarter of a block makes the building change dramatically, I would think. So that would basically entail a complete redesign of the building because you can't just pick up the building up that we have right now and plunk it down on that new Butterfly Lot on the northern half of it and call it good. You'd have to probably shrink it and go up to or get the same building.
What we do have is just an overlay on a overhead which will pass around and start with that.
Maybe you can talk a little bit about, you can't just really pick it up and plunk it down. So you should probably talk a little bit about what that really means.
So this diagram that I prepared just shows you sort of relative scale between the two sites and all we've done on this one is pick up the existing building, move it over to the Butterfly Lot and flip it so that the part that used to face Pearl Street is a part that faces Oak Street. You can see that it, and then didn't try to make any attempt to, you know, whether it would be properly related to the quarter block that would be the Northwest Park Block or Seventh Avenue. So this isn't meant by any means to be a design diagram. It's merely to show some scale. But I think it also shows that the context of the Butterfly Lot site is completely different from the existing site. We have a building now that has a very strong pass-through, access through it that connects a plaza in the front to a parking lot in a future Phase Two, could connect to a portion of a courthouse easily enough. The other side relates much differently. It was streets on three sides. Having an access through the middle doesn't really make any sense on the Butterfly Lot. The facing Seventh, a four-lane state highway as opposed to a Phase Two or courtyard is different. So I think it would be reasonable to say that we would be redesigning from the ground up and so that is where the issue is. We would learn, we've learned a lot from the existing design and carry some of the lessons learned, but if we use some of the relative costs from the existing project and then scale them down for a more abbreviated process, and again, depending on how big a building we built and whether we went full four stories or more, whether we took a floor off and did less, I would think anywhere from $2 to $3 million in pre-construction costs before we ever got to the construction process. And then I couldn't begin to predict what the construction cost would be since I don't know what we'll end up with at that point, but we will lose some time in presuming that construction cost inflation continues at 5% to 6% per year, which is what it currently is, then we would be losing some ground to inflation as well.
6% on $18 million is almost a million dollars.
Correct.
So if you just waited and did exactly the same building at the current inflation, construction inflation rate, you'd add a million dollars in addition to the $2 to $3 million just in construction.
A million per year, yes.
A million per year. And of course, we don't know what the environment's going to look like, the bidding environment. I mean, it could be worse, it could be better, but all the reports that I'm seeing is that the economy's kind of kicking along at the same pace and there's no... I look at what the Fed has done at the national level and what economists say and nobody's saying that we're going to have a massive downturn. And so that just means we're going to keep chugging along the way we're doing, so everything kind of points to what's happened in the recent past moving forward. So we have maybe another million dollars in construction inflation and $2 to $3 million in redesign costs, so we're at $3 to $4 million to move it over to the Butterfly Lot. And then depending on what the construction is, if we just had the same building.
Yeah, I think it could be, the one caveat I would say, and I think Mike's been trying to say it, is it really depends on what the scale and the scope and the design of the new building is. If you choose to build a significantly less building, then the costs are different. If it's a more substantial building, the costs are different as well. And so I think part of it that we would emphasize is that it's unlikely that you can take the existing building, just pick it up and set it on the block without some sense of redesign into that, given the context and what you would want to try to achieve with that. And so there are some additional costs, we just don't know how much some of those might be based on design and construction.
One last question. You mentioned the plaza might go away because you had the farmer's market, but what were the other, you mentioned some other constraints or things that would have to change associated with Butterfly Lot compared to existing?
Right. There's not room for a parking lot on the side anymore. That was our land bank for the Phase Two. And, you know, looking at the way the utilities come in, the slope of the side, all that, that would all be part of the redesign process. And as I've mentioned previously, this is in the part of the E-Web grid that doesn't allow net metering because of a safety feature in the downtown grid that probably won't be addressed anytime soon. It's a very expensive fix and E-Web's studying that, but it's a long-term plan. And so the existing site does have the opportunity for net metering, which means we can put photovoltaics on the roof more cost-effectively and the new site doesn't allow net metering, so it makes the economics of photovoltaics not very good.
So what I think I'm going to do is just, I'm going to head around the table. The clarity, you could pass if you don't have anything you want to ask now, but I'm going to head around the table.
Sure. I have a couple of questions and then I have some comments, but I'll save my comments. So just considering that idea of moving to the Butterfly Lot, do, has there been any scoping out of the concept for the farmer's market permanent location? Is there a concept for how much that might reveal, how much square footage they might need, what they really need, you know, as much as being depicted on this scenario? Do you know?
Only what I saw at the presentation on Thursday, the report at the farmer's market, but that report is in process. I think the farmer's market representative emphasized that several times, but so there's an idea of some size permanent structure that's associated with the quarter block. And I'm making big assumptions here, that it'd be a quarter block, but that's kind of what we've talked about over the years in terms of reclaiming that Northwest Park Block and so on, but even that is yet to be determined.
Yeah. So there's still some uncertainty about exactly how much space they would need to get to the vision that they have in mind.
Correct. They're still in mid...
Because I wonder if the council and elections opportunity to incorporate some aspects of our March trustee hall plaza and create some synergy between those two things rather than concern this.
Personally, yeah. I think on diagram is just sort of this green square that the apartment, the park block, farmer's block needs, just literally copy of the two South Park Blocks just popped up there in terms of size, so you have the kind of option available there and how all that is just put together.
Yeah. Well, I know this is kind of a posse idea, but do you remember mentioning we were looking at the park blocks as part of their renewal, did our conversation, we thought, oh, hey, when there wasn't a street side to them, you know, create a lot more public space to be used out of having hard drive through. I don't think folks were closing that, you know. Um, not here, I'm next. I... Yes. Okay, I'm going to pass this out.
Mike, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have any comments or questions for this round?
I'm, hmm. Hmm. Will we have another round?
Yes.
I think I'll reserve them until after that, but I do have another option I would like to discuss.
Okay. I will, we'll come back in the next round.
I know that's surprising, Alan. Thank you.
George Poling.
Thank you. Mike, you referenced $2 to $3 million on pre-construction costs. Does that include making the Butterfly Lot build ready, not shovel-ready, but build ready?
That does not count demolition or site prep costs on the Butterfly Lot site.
Does not.
Correct.
Okay. All right. And then the discussions that I've heard about as far as the farmer's market is 15,000 to 20,000 square feet. How much of the Butterfly Lot would that actually take up? I know this is kind of a rough diagram.
Right.
A rough depiction of it, but it prompts me, how much would 15,000 to 20,000 square feet be on that?
A quarter block in downtown Eugene is roughly 25,000 square feet. So 20,000 square feet would be nearly the whole green square there.
Do you know what this footprint is?
The footprint of city hall on this diagram is about 9,000 square feet.
Okay. And that's, that's the same as it is on the existing site?
Right. Both, yeah, the, both of those building, hatched building footprints are about 9, 9,500 square feet, somewhere in there.
Okay. That's all the questions I have right now.
Hey, George.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I've got some comments here for us. For one thing, you know, the farmer's market doesn't need this whole green area here, especially if they go up two stories. There's so many unknowns and questions and they can't agree on what they want either. And I think that maybe we could just kind of like bookmark half of that space for them, assuming that it was, you know, it could be two stories, open air, that's not going to be super expensive to build something like that. That allows the city hall to have its plaza area as depicted, you know, for the original idea site. This could be a plaza, shave this down. It's true, now, we heard, I believe it was $1 million plus demolition to move city hall over there. Now it's $3 million plus demo. Do you have any idea how much the demo would be, just a rough idea?
We think it'd be somewhere in the $200,000 to $300,000 range without, it'd be a lot simpler than the existing building.
A heck of a lot cheaper than, yeah, the city hall. Because there's no, there's, I mean, there's nothing, nothing there. There's no there there. There's no utilities and all that stuff. So, all right, so let's say $3 million, but if we, if we proceed with the idea of, you know, swapping these areas out and proceed with our Phase Two in the county courthouse, we're going to save tens of millions of dollars in the long run if we do it that way. Because it would be maybe $10 million, let's say it's $15 million to remodel the courthouse for our Phase Two. To build 100, you know what the square footage of the courthouse is, county courthouse?
I believe it's a little over 100,000 square feet, including the basement.
That's what I was thinking. I was using 100,000, but I just wanted to verify that. Thank you. So, I mean, you know, our current city hall, the way it's shaping up is hard and soft cost is like $900 a square foot. I think we could remodel that building for $10 or $15 million and then if we were going to build 100,000 square foot building new at 550 a square foot, hard and soft, that's like $55 million. $55 million minus 15 is $40 million. Minus three to move, we're going to save $37 million if we do this land swap, build on the Butterfly Lot and remodel the county courthouse once the county moves over to, you know, our old city hall site. So, you know, and there's so many different things that would be co-located. I like the idea of locating the municipal court over there with the new courthouse because then there's no ambiguity. It's like everybody knows where to go. You go to the courthouse and you just have to figure out, is it muni court or district court? But there's just one courthouse. I think that's a neat idea. The justice center was discussed last time. I'll need another round, Mayor.
Okay. Chris?
Thank you. I appreciate as far as you can go and so I'll try to work through kind of the four major interests for me, which is the time, the location, the cost and what you get when you're all done. So I'll start with time. I'm hearing that what you're saying is if we were to look at moving city hall to the Butterfly Lot, in addition to the cost, which is a second issue, but the first one is, you're thinking that in order to do the redesign work and the demolition work and all the other stuff, it would probably be another year to a year and a half before we could start construction?
Yes. I think a year and a half would be reasonable because a year from now, you know, we wouldn't bid in July again.
Yeah.
We'd wait for it later in the year, so yeah, about a year and a half.
Okay. Okay. In fact, I'm glad because I'm hoping the context of the conversation is to be conservative in costs and time so that we don't wind up under, under expecting. So a year and a half, possibly, you know, it could even go longer than that depending, but let's say a year and a half. So from this point, it would be another year and a half before we could actually start construction. And so we don't know what the, what the costs would be, even with the ups and downs of the construction cycle, I mean, it would be another year and a half of construction inflation. So $2 or $3 million more dollars because of the redesign costs, then whatever the construction inflation is at 5% or 6%, and then the loss of a year and a half of time and momentum and whatever might happen over that. Okay. It gives me...
That's what I keep coming to every time I run it. That's where I end up, yes.
Okay. Okay. That's helpful. And in terms of the location, on the existing city hall site that we're looking at on the little overlay that you had, how much of that light blue square was actually in play for city hall and how much was the reserve for the parking lot in Phase Two? Was it somewhere about where the word "site" is or was it north of that or south of that?
Well, I think we had assumed some amount of buffer between the building.
Right.
And so the Phase Two building would happen above the word "existing."
Above the word "existing"?
Yeah. Perhaps starting at about the top of the word "existing."
Okay. And then what was going to be in that area south of that where it says existing city hall down to the actual building itself? Was that going to be plaza or open space or?
Hadn't determined that definitely, but it could have some parking. We've always thought of it as perhaps some kind of a courtyard in between the two buildings. Probably depends a lot on what kind of parking we included with Phase Two. If we went below grade, then we might be more likely to do some courtyard in between, but, but something that's a pleasing amenity to the overall complex.
But the space is flexible.
Correct.
In other words, you're describing a number of different things that could be done there so we don't have a specific idea in mind. So to the next...
Just from a good design standpoint, you'd want to set it back far enough so it's not in the solar shadow of Phase One as a...
Right. Whatever you did with Phase Two or a building, let's say, you wouldn't want it to be so close to city hall that it was overshadowing.
Correct.
Understood. So the question then with location, if we were to talk about tentatively the concept they have for the courthouse, 250,000 square feet, could you physically fit it into that half-block and the little space above existing? Could you fit 250,000 square feet in there and how many stories would it take to do that?
Well, I know that in their half-block models, they were coming up with seven or eight floors to get to 250 square feet. So having an L that connected back over to Pearl Street there might, might take a floor off of that.
So it might be six floors?
Right.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a sense.
Yeah.
So conceivably, you could fit 250,000 square feet on there, maybe in six floors?
Right. It might, there might be a little stepping to that, but yes.
I'm just trying to get a gross sense of what you could do there.
Five and a half to six floors.
Okay. That's really helpful. That's really helpful for me. Okay. Thank you.
Betty?
Thank you. Before we talk a great deal about this, I wonder if we should find out how many people are even willing to consider moving to the Butterfly Lot?
Certainly ask that question.
I'm willing to consider it, but I just want, if nobody's, if we don't have a majority that are willing to, or some people who are willing to consider it, we're just wasting time talking about what it would cost, I think.
So this is the way that I look at it. This conversation is to get you enough information that you think you can make that decision, make that choice.
I'm not saying already made the decision. I think willing to even consider it, making the choice.
Mayor saying?
Yeah, okay.
I don't know.
To even consider it.
You don't know. Okay. I'm willing to consider it, so I just wondered if very many people were. Okay. I have nothing else.
Mayor, can I get back on the cue, please?
Yes, you can. I'm going, in the second round, I've got Council Zelenka, Council Clark and Council Brown. Yep. And Council Pryor. So, Alan?
Sure. I love the idea of exploring using the old courthouse, once the new courthouse is built, to... once the new courthouse is built to house Phase Two of City Hall. I think that could be a really cost-effective way to do it. But I don't see the connection between doing that and Phase One. They're not necessarily linked. They're not dependent. Being able to use the old courthouse and remodel it isn't dependent upon us moving the new City Hall to the Butterfly Lot. And especially if we grant the county and the court the ability to do an L-shaped building using the northern part of the, of the east half of the block, which we were planning on Phase Two. And if they do that wraparound L-shaped building with a new courthouse, then that leaves the Butterfly Lot open to do other things with it. And then it also opens up the new courthouse, the old courthouse for remodel. I guess at this point, to answer Betty's question, we've got a $2 to $3 million redesign cost, probably another million dollars in construction cost. So we're adding two, we're adding $3 to $4 million just to move over there. And all those savings George was talking about, which I think are possible, don't have anything to do with that. That's all speculative whether or not we do Phase Two or not. They're not necessarily linked. So moving to Butterfly Lot doesn't get us any savings. It only adds to the cost of this building and adds time to it and a great deal of uncertainty about what's going to happen in the short term with regard to the bidding. But it does provide some opportunities to look at it in a different way. But redesigning it means basically starting over and adding a whole bunch of costs to it. So at this point, I don't see the benefit of even considering moving to the Butterfly Lot. I do, however, think there's a whole lot of benefit of the council cooperating, collaborating with the county and the court on how the Butterfly Lot and the wraparound courthouse and the old courthouse, how that all plays out together for Phase Two. I think that's a great idea. I think it's a potential for a bunch of win-wins on that particular scenario. And we'd have, you could build a bridge across as there was before so that the access to the new, the old courthouse redesigned as Phase Two City Hall would be directly connected to the new City Hall and potentially the courthouse. So I think there's a lot of benefit we had there. But I don't see anything but costs associated with shifting to the Butterfly Lot and time and adding a whole bunch of uncertainty to the plan.
Council Clark, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to apologize in advance to my colleagues for beating a dead horse because I'm quite aware that they're tired of it. But I know that I read and get input from people all the time. And so for the sake of a public discussion, I'm going to ask a few questions. Chris, you just mentioned four things that I thought were important. You said time, money, location, and one other, and I didn't catch that.
The result, what you get when you're done.
Right. Okay, so, Mr. Manager, I'm going to try and ask a careful question. Are you aware of, are you aware of E-Web's willingness to discuss the sale of their administration building?
What I haven't heard is their board talk about it. I know their general manager is looking at all options for their current location and future location. So I know he's at least in, considering where they want to be, but I don't know how serious their board is with that.
Right. I appreciate that. And it's my understanding, I've spoken with at least three board members who've mentioned that, so I guess you'll just have to take my word for it that they're willing to, which is why I made that motion at the April meeting. Mike, I was wondering if you could tell me, will you confirm for me that including the north annex building, the square footage of the E-Web admin building is about 100,000 square feet, including the fourth floor of the main?
I don't recall anymore. I used to have that figure in my head, but I'm too old to keep that stuff now.
I was told by a person associated with E-Web that that number is 100,000 square feet. And I was also told that, and perhaps John can confirm this or not, they're willing to consider the idea of moving the fourth floor much sooner than they had previously discussed.
Is that a question? Again, I think the new general manager has talked and is looking at a variety of options for staying there or moving. And it could include the fourth floor or not. I don't know any details that they would be considering.
My understanding is that a new assessment of that is that the fourth floor might be able to be moved much sooner than they ever thought. So here's the point. They have two appraisals for that building at $12 million and $14 million. So in Chris's consideration of time, money, location, and what we get when we're done, that's very fast. We could begin to move in very quickly. And what we would be getting is 100,000 square feet for $14 million. It's over three times the space or half the money of what we're currently considering. And if we sold the entire current City Hall block to the county for $4 or $5 million, we'd have all the money necessary in order to rebuild the interior to our specifications. And then the public would have two brand-new facilities for the money we have in the bank. And I really don't understand why we're not considering this seriously. And I just needed to say that. Thank you.
Yes, all of this is new news entirely, entirely. So we wouldn't be considering something that we didn't know anything about.
With respect, Mayor, I've been asking for quite a long time.
Mike, I guess what I'm referring to is we have not heard from E-Web any proposal or...
Chosen not to ask, the mayor, with respect.
Just saying. Okay, Council Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think, I still think it's best to move the, our City Hall to the Butterfly Lot. If you, you know, because now we're half a block, three-quarters of a block away to what could conceivably be Phase Two, and we're split up now. If it was on the Butterfly Lot, you have a skywalk or a tunnel, and you go from, you know, the council chambers to the rest of the city offices right across the street instead of having to walk around. Plus there's, it would increase the county's cost for their courthouse. It'd probably have to go up at least another story on part of that lot. I think it's a much cleaner design and it gets up, you know, there'd be this totally unified design on our old site. I think the savings involved there are very attractive. I just had a chance to read this letter, Council Coling had a copy, from Commissioner Stewart, the chair of the Board of Commissioners. I didn't get one delivered to my house.
It came in very late on email.
Oh, I see, on the email, right. Okay, I didn't check it.
I checked it just before I left the house.
Yeah, well, yes, thank you.
They're asking us to consider...
Like me and several of the councillors, the county commissioners were, thought that was a very productive, very stimulating meeting that we held on Thursday. I do, too. And they would like to, for us to consider the idea of forming a task force with them to examine more in-depth some of these questions here. And I don't see that it would take that long if we did that. A month and a half or two months max. Specifically, the cost to move, you know, more in-depth... Cost of what it would cost to move Phase One to the Butterfly Lot, what it would cost, at least initial estimates to remodel, you know, and change the design of the old courthouse, remodel it out, construction, and figuring the construction savings, like I've been trying to do. I figure, you know, saving $35 or $40 million if we do it that way. And then also examine co-locating City Hall. The other option would be co-locate City Hall and the courthouse on the City Hall block. And I think it would be very worthwhile to enter into that exploration with them. And I also think that if the result of that was favorable, then we could start negotiations on the swap. Both parties have goodwill. If both parties wanted to do it, I don't think it would be, you know, knock-down, drag-out, hard-knuckle bargaining. I think if both parties want to achieve this, I think it could be done fairly expeditiously.
Council Pryor?
Thank you. Yeah, I am, I really want to be a good partner with the county, with the courts...
And with the farmer's market. And so that is something that, if it's possible to do, I would love to be, you know, creative and open to looking at options. But the concern I have, as some others here have had, is that sometimes when you create a new view or go back to look at something, it can run into an enormous amount of time because you wind up creating more questions than you answer. We tend to do that. Let's study this, and then the study turns into a year, year and a half, two years. We talk about it, we go off in different directions. And so I am open to the notion of a task force. I think a task force could definitely maybe help us answer some specific questions as long as it was kept to a very tight timeline and a very tight mandate in terms of what it was looking at and what it was talking about. So it didn't start kind of mission creeping into talking about all kinds of options. And so, yeah, I'm supportive of a task force as long as the task force operates within a very limited timeline. I think for me, the notion of, and this gets back to the question of whether or not this task force, if we were to create one or if we were to delay, would part of that mandate, would part of that conversation include looking at City Hall on the Butterfly Lot? My answer was that I didn't know because for me, yeah, sure, if it's good partnership, why not talk about it? Except, I keep coming back to $3, $4 million in a year and a half. And $3 or $4 million in a year and a half, to me, is an enormous stumbling block. It creates a lot of anxiety in me. And so in the desire to be a good partner, I think we can create the task force and talk about what our opportunities are to work together. But it may be that those opportunities need to be focused in a specific direction so that we at least get something with a good outcome when we're done. And so what I'm saying the long way around is I don't know for sure about the Butterfly Lot, but right now I have a lot of anxiety about the cost and the time if we were to look at the Butterfly Lot. And that, to me, is a major stumbling block to the Butterfly Lot. But I am much more open to having a very productive and very worthwhile conversation about all the opportunities we might have on the existing lot for both the courthouse and the county and for the city.
Mayor, should I get in the queue?
Yeah.
So I have not landed on any specific way forward, but I am open to the discussion and a task force to take a look at what might be potential options, including the Butterfly Lot. I think getting some more certainty around what those costs might be and delays would be, would be of value. And also, what is the county willing to put on the table? How are they willing to work with us to make this viable for us and the responsibility we have to the public? You know, and as far as the E-Web building, I completely understand why Council Clark is bringing that up. But just to recall, what, two years ago, we had a pretty robust discussion at the council. And at that time, we heard from members of the public that they wanted us to stay at Eighth and Olive, that it was important that City Hall remain downtown. Council Clark and I had a minority viewpoint on that. And, you know, some members of the public may not have been paying attention back then, and they are now. And that's why we're hearing from some folks that, why aren't you going to the E-Web building? But my feeling is we had that conversation, we made a decision, and we moved forward in good faith on that decision. You know, I do see some rationale in the bigger picture for siding City Hall in the Butterfly Lot if in fact we were interested in using the old courthouse for our Phase Two, which I think is, it would be a very smart option because then they'd be directly across the street from each other, and the county offices would be directly across the street from the courthouse. But that doesn't mean it's the best idea. So for me, if we were to go forward with any of these ideas other than keeping our site on this, our City Hall where we are planning now, I would want to know, because I doubt it would be a financial savings to the city to do this. It just doesn't seem to be penciling out that way. So one of the things I would want to learn from the work of a task force would be what are the other tangible benefits to the residents of Eugene if we changed our current course? And it needs to be more than just that it looks good to have the city and county working together. It can't just be a feel-good benefit. It has to be something very tangible, whether it's improved delivery service. You know, I don't know what those things are. So, you know, I made a quick list of, just off the top of my head, things that would be lost if we moved from the current site. Can't do the rooftop photovoltaics. We lose our great streets vision and our presence on Eighth. We delay up to a year and a half before we even start to build. Things that would be gained, City Hall's not overshadowed by a larger county courthouse, house preservation of the farmer's market, potential to create a justice center. So I'm still in a weighing the pros and cons mode.
Council Evans?
Mayor, can I be in the queue, please?
Mm-hmm, third round.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I am really in favor of us taking one last look at this through the lens of a task force. I think that if we sit down with the county, we sit down with the presiding judge, and over maybe the next four to six weeks, sometime during our break before we come back, a little after Labor Day, that maybe we can get some further clarity and maybe come to a point where we can find the kinds of efficiencies that we're looking for in terms of cost and also the kind of efficiencies we're looking in terms of service delivery. Because at the end of the day, I think that, for me, the City Hall or the Justice Center or a combined public services building or buildings will be the ultimate, the ultimate gain for the public is what is the function of these buildings and how the public is going to get the best benefit from what we ultimately construct, either separately as city-county or in some form of collaboration as city and county together. And so I think it's worth us taking that opportunity to do that. And so I'm really strongly in favor of us having a very short-term task force so that if, whatever decision that we make to move forward to the next phase of this, that it does not cost the public any more money or not much more money than we've already expended or are going to expend on this project.
Council Taylor?
Thank you. I think we need to find out what kind of deal the county can help us get to avoid spending more money. We know that there is a desire to have the entire block, and we need to find out what can they do for us if we do that for them. As far Mike's reference back to E-Web, I thought we all agreed finally that the city and the county need to be close together for the benefit of the public.
I think there's, I think there's no doubt about that. If we do have a task force, I suggest that you let each councillor, and I assume each commissioner also, suggest members and then choose from that group. I have some ideas myself. I think there should be some people who are experts, not just politicians. And of course, whom we think is an expert may vary from person to person.
But I think, I don't think we would be doing a task force to look as if we're cooperating with the county but to see whether we can do something better. And since we know now that they don't want three-fourths of a block for a courthouse, we may as well stop talking about that. And that's all, thank you.
So next round, I have Council Brown, Council Clark, and Council Zelenka. And then we'll try to kind of begin moving here. Council Brown?
Yeah, I just want to go back to support the idea of a task force. Council Evans articulated that much deeper than I did in my other rounds. And I agree with everything that he said. I sense the spirit of cooperating as well. I need the judge and the commissioner to let's locate on our side table. And I feel that, you know, this task force, it couldn't take that long. Exactly with both our citizens adding us a great some time. This kind of new idea of consolidating this big center cooperating plus a lot of your planning swap, that's relatively new idea. But... But in four days, you know, using basis of stuff, both parts are ready to go. And if not, I'm positive, and I hope it would be very positive. And if it is positive, I feel that we could go there and go seeing it and go, and I don't think it would take long, you know, as long as the parties want to be fair and logical with it, we would feel that way. So, it will take a year and a half to strip the truck, and we could, we could make construction exactly. If it all starts along and all the pieces go in place, probably the jurisdiction lays for you, and that would not be many, but, you know, with my own muscles, but, right next fall, let's go like that. Now, maybe, like, I'm really, if we see, if we have these probabilities and proceed with our original plan, which I hope we don't do. So, the only way we're going to find out if it's going to work is to try it. We can sit around all day and speculate, "Well, maybe it'll work, maybe it won't." "Oh, gosh, you know, gee, it's going to delay, it's going to make it cost so much more money." I feel like, you know, if we rebid next winter and spring, we're going to see a lot lower bids, because all these guys will have finished their current projects, and they'll be looking for more work, and I think it'll be more competitive. Sure, that's a guess, but I think that's typically what happens. Things go in cycles, and we, it's kind of at a bad cycle right now, but that will change in the not-too-distant future. So, I hope people can support the idea of this task force. Do we want it to go on forever and ever? No, of course we don't. But I think both groups are focused and serious about this. And Commissioner Stewart's letter to us, they understand that, you know, our desire to keep moving forward expeditiously on our City Hall, they get that. They're not going to hang us up. Thank you, Mayor.
So, I've got Counselor Clark, Counselor Zelenka, and Counselor Poling in the queue. And I just want to make the comment that if, at the end of this discussion, you all agree on forming a task force, we will need to discuss that further in an executive session before making any decisions about it, because it has to do with real estate transactions. So, that is not something that we can make off the cuff here around this table. We need, at the open session, we need to go about it. If that's the direction you want to go, then we need to go about it in a thoughtful manner.
Okay. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I would support a motion for the creation of a task force. Secondarily, I would say that I think it's important for us to keep context in mind. One of my friends, Counselor Taylor and Sorette, mentioned previous decision-making processes. Those were based on the idea that the construction of a new City Hall on our current property and the purchase of the E-Web building were roughly equivalent in price. That was when we were, we were planning for $15 million for that construction, that on our side. And, as a matter of fact, Mr. Pennwell also presented to us the other additions that E-Web needed to do to their building, which would cost us money. They have since done those. Those are complete, the HVAC and the sealing of their roof. So, those are no longer an expense we would face. The money I was talking about is the entirety of the expense we would face, other than the soft costs of conforming it to our purposes. So, the equivalent decision that we made years ago now, it isn't really the same, because the costs aren't the same. But I would say that, especially to my friend Counselor Sorette, who saw the wisdom of looking at this earlier, if she was in favor of the idea of asking the citizens what they would prefer, I would absolutely support that, because I'm fairly certain I know how that would come out. So, if we're willing to ask the people of Eugene what they prefer, I think this, as a major project, might be the subject of something we want to ask them about. Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka?
Well, let's be very clear about this. A delay to consider the Butterfly Lot has a significant cost. Let's be real clear about that. If we delay one to three months, we cannot take the current bids that we have. That requires us to rebid, and you said $150,000 to $300,000 just to do that process. That's just the administrator cost. And then, construction inflation, a half a year at 6%, is another half a million dollars, maybe more. We're easily approaching $1 million to do this task force, to consider the Butterfly Lot. I think it's irresponsible to add more costs and more uncertainty to the new City Hall project. I support a task force to, but it should be around Phase Two and not Phase One. We can look at all the synergies and the cooperation, the land swap, and all the savings associated with that, and reusing the new county, the old courthouse and the wraparound new courthouse, and moving forward with all that, and do the current plan, and probably save the, and if we end up where we are right now, we're just going to add a lot more cost to this. So, that's not my preferred way of moving forward. I like the idea of a task force, but that task force should be considered around Phase Two, not Phase One.
Counselor Poling?
Thank you. I agree with Allen. I think a task force is a good idea for Phase Two. Forming a task force right now, and I appreciate Greg throwing out the four to six week maximum time, but the way we do things, it'll take us that long to decide who's going to be or what the task force is going to look like? Already, we've heard two different ideas. Greg's talking about elected officials and the judge. Betty wants all elected officials to appoint a citizen. No matter what we do by forming a task force for Phase One, we're going to lose the GMP anyway. It's going to cost us, it's going to cost us more money anyway. You know, I appreciate the county's willingness to want to work with us collaboratively on this. I just wish this was the conversation we had 10 years ago instead of just now, at the very last. You know, my preference currently, you know, I could go with either building on the existing site, but would I be real happy with us being dwarfed by a six-story building? Or moving to the Butterfly at $3 additional million? But like George Brown has pointed out, in the long run, if we go with the old county courthouse for our new services, we save tens of millions. So, you know, I could go either way. I don't know if we're going to, what kind of a motion we're going to have tonight, but if it's to form a task force to discuss Phase One, I'm going to have to vote no. I don't know if we're going to have that discussion or not.
Pryor?
I was going to say something else, but I can't remember what it was now. Anyway, I just, you know, like I said, when, you know, Allen called me earlier today, we had a discussion about this, and, you know, right off the bat, I was for moving to the Butterfly. I think it makes more sense. You know, then, once the county builds the, on the entire lot on the existing site, then the remodel of the courthouse. Having had to move prisoners up and down through courts, having to deal with jurors, having to deal with attorneys and judges, the simpler the better for everybody's safety and security. And, you know, with the times being, what they are now, we, a couple of weeks ago, we saw what happened in a courthouse because of situation, the way it was, the way it was set up. I just, you know, I just can't really see us going through another task force for four to six weeks to come, end up right where we are right now. I believe that would be the outcome. We'll be right here at the table discussing the same things.
I've got Counselor Sorette, and Pryor, and Brown. And then I am going to try to begin to move us through some, some kinds of decision-making. I did want to say, though, that even in the prior scenario, you were talking about a council, the building we were going to build, and then a future taller building.
It's going to be a tall building.
It's always going to be dwarfed.
But not wrapped around.
Well, not, was it? No, it wasn't wrapped around. Right.
Okay. Counselor, Claire?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate Allen's position and his words of caution, but I also feel like I'm not convinced we can go forward with our current design on the current site with the current cost. So I feel like we are in a position where we need to reconsider at least that design and how much it's going to cost to build. So that's part of the reason that I'm supportive of this idea of a time-limited, expedited task force. I don't think a month timeline is realistic. But I also then recognize, I think Counselor Zelenka is right, and Counselor Poling might be right, that we might end up, it's a risk that we might end up in the same situation without achieving our goals and adding to the cost. So, I think we need to acknowledge that, but we're in a tough spot. So, I don't feel like we have a ton of good options before us, and if there is a vision that could be created that would serve both the county and the city well, I think there's some value in taking that risk.
I call on Counselor Pryor and Counselor Brown, but I would comment here that you could make a decision to rebid that is separate from a task force decision. They are not necessarily the same thing. Counselor Pryor?
Yeah, I agree with that. And part of the argument for the rebidding, or at least taking the pause, is we don't have the full amount of money in the bank. And I would be reluctant to pull the trigger on authorizing construction when I don't have all the money in hand, or at least a publicly discussed viable plan for having the money in hand. I know we've got a lot of different options, but we've still not actually settled on what is the mechanism that we're going to use to provide the additional funds. We do have options available, and I've asked the city manager to pull those together. He may not have them ready for this conversation. But I would want to know where that remaining money was going to come from, whether it's going to be on the Butterfly Lot, on the existing City Hall site, or wherever it's going to be. I need to know where all the money's going to come from, and that's going to take a little extra time. So I can't act now. And if, and as long as I can't act now, then I've got the time to maybe pursue a little bit of a focused task force process concurrently. And I like the idea of something that could be done in five, six weeks, because that gives us time to finalize our conversation about revenue and money, and still do a little exploring with the task force. So, that's why I might be willing to support a task force. And I agree with George. I've seen these processes in the past that just become a morass. And I think if you give them a focused job, that's independent of some of the considerations that we need to talk about, with a good membership of people who are technically proficient and are well-versed in this area, then I think we could, you could probably get a lot of things done, or at least get some good advice, which I really could use at this point. So, yeah, I'm supportive of taking a little bit of a break, because it's more than just the task force, and it's more than just the location. It's actually also what's the funding going to be? Where are we going to get the money to pay for it?
Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I really think we should go with the task force. I mean, one way to save money, and this could be discussed by the task force, especially with this idea of co-location of certain functions, and not just at the, perhaps, justice, you know, future Justice Center, but in this building, in the public service building, it's possible there's going to be space available. There is some now. Perhaps we could locate another city office in this building. We could, and if we do something like that, we could save some money. We could shave off the fourth floor of, from the current design, and that would save $2.8 million, almost $3 million right there. We don't know exactly what's going to go in there anyway, is my understanding. So, I think it could be very productive. I like to think positively most times, because what Counselors Sorette and Counselor Pryor have said, I mean, we're not even sure how we're going to pay for it. So, I think a little pause here is totally justified, because I think we could come up with a much better solution and have a really neat unified civic center downtown here, rather than just each party kind of like, "Okay, well, we'll plunk this down over here, and then we'll do this over here." It could be kind of a unified concept, and I think it could be really neat. Thank you.
So, I'll just try to put up in front of you, and then you can decide how you want to make, what kind of motion you want to put in play. One is, if you did nothing, we would just continue down the path that we're on, correct, city manager?
When you say nothing, I think there's two pieces to that. One is, currently scheduled to have a supplemental budget hearing on the 25th, and so unless the council takes action to not do that, that's our intent to still do that. If council does nothing in the sense of actually appropriating dollars, then what that means is, is that the current guaranteed maximum price bids would lapse. So that would, so there's two different do-nothing scenarios.
So, your question is, you want to continue on the path that we have been going on and accept the maximum bid offer, correct? Second one is, you could decide to go through a rebid. And give us some dates on that.
So essentially, what would happen on a rebid, and Mike, you can fill in the gaps. We would want to still hit the bidding climate, which is six to nine months. What we would recommend on that, unless council says otherwise, is that we'd want to do, as Mike mentioned, at least some look at the design and value engineering, so there's some of that that would have to occur. We would want to get started on that now, to start trying to hit some of that time. And so what that would mean is, is saying yes to that redesign. That's what Mike mentioned, that $150,000, $200,000 to redesign? Was that the?
I would probably break it into two parts. I'd probably do an initial analysis to look at what the potential is for savings, and then perhaps bring that to council for review then, to decide, because there may be an adjustment to your values that are embedded in that. But, you know, we need to start that initial analysis now so that we can bring something back to you for further decision then.
So if, if the council wants to leave the option open of rebidding the project regardless of the outcome of a task force, then we would want to start that process, at least in a phased approach.
So then, do you need a, I'm just trying to understand what I need to do here. So do you need an affirmative motion for a rebid if that's the direction they want to go?
So, Mayor, as you start getting into those kinds of details, what you need to do, whether it's today, next Monday, is to decide whether you want to accept the guaranteed maximum price and approve the supplemental budget. If you don't do that, then my recommendation as your next step is we hold an executive session, because there are issues related to how we move forward, how we approach the county, how the task force is set up. And we would want to do that before you go on break, so that before you go on break, you're actually making a decision as to what each of those next steps are, that you're talking about. Rebid, task force, Phase One, Phase Two.
They're all in an executive session?
Right, because there's some strategic issues that I'd like to discuss with you privately before you have the public discussion of those.
So it sounds like the takeaway from tonight is, one is whether you want to go ahead with the, accept a maximum bid. If you don't, then we go to the next step, which is the executive session to discuss the rebid and these other kinds of things. And, and so that, we wouldn't have that tonight. We would have that another, at a, soon.
You could either have that after your executive, so you have a 7:30 public hearing, which will probably be relatively short. You then have an Urban Renewal Agency executive session, which will be relatively short. So you could have, if you are all willing, you could have the executive session I'm talking about after that executive session of the Urban Renewal Agency. So you could do that tonight and finish those things up today. And then, whether it's on Wednesday or next week, come back and actually decide task force, Phase One, Phase Two, rebid. But you could get the executive session done tonight if you wanted to. But you could get the executive session, um, done tonight if you wanted to.
Okay. Okay. So that's, uh, and then I guess the other outstanding question, uh, that Mike has brought up is about considering or, or responding to his suggestion of E-Web property. So those are all the things that are, um, out on the table. So what I need right now, I think, is to go around and ask you whether yes or no on the, um, accepting the maximum bid, correct?
Yeah. And we would want actually a vote for you to say however you want to do that. How your motion.
I have a motion.
Well, I, I just want a clean motion with nothing, nothing added to it. I just simply want a motion that says that. And that would be...
The Vice President.
No, that would be, oh, uh, no, you, you should, you should do it.
Okay. I'll move to accept the guaranteed minimum price and proceed to a public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second.
And just so we're clear, it's, although you're using the words except, we are not entering into a contract with the builder until after you have had your supplemental budget, should this motion pass.
So if you are voting yes on this, it is to keep moving in the direction that we've been...
Correct, and hold the, uh, public hearing on the supplemental budget, and then if that's approved, the manager would have the authority to sign a contract.
All those who...
Yes, you want to... Okay, I'd like...
Want to speak?
Yes, I do.
Sure.
Thank you. I'm not going to support this. This, uh, I, I, I think we need to take a pause here, discuss other remedies. Did you say, how long, what was the time period for, uh, rebidding the project? It was several months, was it?
Yes, we, we would, uh, want to shoot for, uh, late winter, early spring timeframe.
Uh-huh. Okay, so like February, March, April, maybe?
Correct. February, March, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, well, I think that's the way to go. I mean, we, we don't even know how we're going to pay for this, and, um, I think it makes much more sense to reject this, uh, maximum guaranteed price and...
Mayor, may I be in the queue?
And, uh, pause, and have the, let the task force do its work, and I think we'll come up with a better result. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor?
If we want to accept this maximum price, do we have to do it tonight? Could it be next Wednesday or next Monday?
Um, so what you're really deciding, um, is that you want to move toward the public hearing. The true approval of the guaranteed maximum price is action on the supplemental budget. Until you appropriate dollars, this is really direction as to, and intent as to where you're going.
Does the vote have to be tonight if we're going to go, move, move in that direction?
We need, some vote tonight would be very helpful, so we know whether to hold the executive session tonight and talk about some of the other issues.
We can't have, we can't have an executive session and then vote on this afterwards?
You could. The, it's just a question as to what you're indicating by voting or not voting on this tonight.
I'd, I'd rather wait until after we have the executive session to vote, but...
That's just my comment.
Legally, you can do that.
Thank you.
You can move to table.
Okay, I move to table till after the executive session.
I'll second.
Second.
Not debatable. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four. Uh, Counselor Evans?
Aye.
Counselor Clark?
Aye.
So that's six, and six in, in favor of tabling, and opposition, two, so it's tabled until after our executive session today.
And so what that...
Mayor, may I still make a comment?
I suppose.
One second, Mike. So what that means, just for the public, is that you will be coming out of executive session, um, to come back into open session to possibly act on that motion or consider other motions tonight.
Right. Correct. Okay, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to set, uh, on the table another potential for action, and it's this. When E-Web built their facility, they used an opposite procedure from us. We, as a council, set our values and said, what kind of building would we like to build, and under what conditions? And then asked the question, what would it cost? They did that and got a very high price tag, as have we, and then said, all right, here's the dollar amount. It will be no more than this dollar. What can we get for this dollar amount? And that might be something we should consider. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, so we're, uh, through with the business of this...
I have one little quick question to Glenn, and that is, an executive session does not need to be noticed, 24-hour notice of a public meeting?
Um, what's required is that you have notice of the public meeting. Under the public meetings law, you can add other items to your agenda. And so the reason why there was the notice over the weekend about the Urban Renewal Agency executive session is because that's a separate legal entity, and so we had to give that 24 hours' notice. But you can add other items to your agenda, just like occasionally you have intended motions that are not on the agenda, but you already have noticed the public meeting.
I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We got it. All right. All right.